Okay, the time is 4:31 and I'm calling the meeting for December 12, 2023 to order. Roll call vote Samantha?
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Trustee Pearson?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Wigan, seconded by Trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Here, yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
We have no comment cards for closed session? All right, and we will soon move into closed session. The items are for A, student discipline, one case; for B, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, one case; for D, conference with labor negotiator; and for E, public employee discipline dismissal, release, and employment. We will return to open session at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening. We are coming back from our closed session. It's 6:02 and we will begin our opening ceremonies with, led by Victor Jimenez from Early College High School. Thank you.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the adoption of the minutes from November 14, 2023. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Trustee Wigan, seconded by Trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Okey dokey. And I guess next we have item 10 of the tradition.
Okay. Trustee Crane?
Yes, we, do we have the plaque?
It's coming.
Okay. It is customary that we honor and recognize our outgoing board president. And typically we give a plaque that you can hang anywhere in the house or take it with you in your car or whatever.
Make a chain out of it.
And make a big chain out of it. And, and we also give a gift to our board president. So we will, I'll do that first since the plaque is coming soon.
So. President?
Thank you.
Ashley, on behalf of the.
On behalf of the trustees, we want to thank you for your leadership, your dedication, and your very, very passionate advocacy for all kids, and specifically your West Side kids. And you've been just 100% behind the work, and we appreciate you and we thank you because this is, this was a very big job. And so thank you from all of us. Thank you so much. And now we will present the plaque. Which says, "In recognition of distinguished and devoted service as president, Ashley Anderson, President, Board of Education, 2023 NMUSD."
Thank you. Hi, thank you. Thank you all. Number 11, we have our annual organizational meeting. Dr. Smith?
Oh, do we have a motion? So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Wigan, seconded by Trustee Crane. All right, Dr. Smith?
Just want to make a comment before I start the first item that I'm not wearing a mask for political reasons. I've been sick for nine days. Finally okay to be out in public and I just care about the people next to me and don't want to infect them. You are our students, so that's why I'm wearing a mask tonight. This is the annual meeting where we appoint the new officers of the board and their committees that they've self-selected. So we'll start now with, do I have a nomination for board president for 2024?
I nominate Carol Crane.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Congratulations. The gavel is now yours to lead the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
11B?
Was that cheerful cheering outside?
He's leading that. She's leading the rest.
All right, so do I?
Yeah, you're up.
Okay, do I have a nomination for board vice president?
I nominate Krista Wigan for vice president.
I second.
All right, we have a nomination by Trustee Barto and seconded by Trustee Pearson. Any discussion?
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
All right, so congratulations. We'll move on to approving the election of board clerk. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion for Trustee Ursoilu to be board clerk for 2024.
I second.
All right, discussion? All right, let's vote. Trustee Anderson?
I was just going to say, for me, it's important for her to be in that role. I think we have all been really great this year at establishing that there's a lot of, there's much more balance than there was in the past. So I think it would be great to have Crane, Trustee Crane as the president, and then Trustee Wigan. So we have Newport, Newport-Costa Mesa, and then Costa Mesa, as well as the three who got elected in 2020. So everyone has a chance. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
No.
Okay.
All right, so we have a new clerk. Congratulations, Lea, Lea Ursoilu. Next, we will be appointing the, approving the appointment of our secretary, which is Dr. Smith. And do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. And any comments or any discussion? All right, let's move on to the vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Congratulations, Dr. Smith. Now we move to 11E, which is approve appointment of the assistant secretary. This is actually a, it's, I'll read them. It's Assistant Superintendent Elementary Education, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Assistant Superintendent Achievement, Innovation, and Continuous Improvement, Assistant Superintendent Chief Human Resources Officer, Assistant Superintendent Special Services, and lastly but not least, Assistant Superintendent Chief Business Official. Do I have a nomination?
So moved.
A second?
Okay, we have Trustee Wigan and seconded by, was it Pearson? All right, any comments, discussion? Let's go for the vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Congratulations. 11F, is approved the recommendation for chief negotiator, and this is Leona Olson. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Let's vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Next is the approval designation of management personnel. And the list is very long, so just, it is, trustees, if you have any questions on the list that's provided, let us know now. Otherwise, we can just go ahead and make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the election of the committees as stated on our most recent updated pick. Oh, I'm sorry. Nope, sorry. I was skipping ahead.
Oh, do I have a, so does your, does your?
I mean, I'm happy to approve G as well.
11G?
Sure, yes.
Okay, Anderson, seconded by anyone?
I'll make a second.
Thank you. Trustee Barto, a vote, discussion, vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yep.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Thank you. 11H, at this point, I need a motion to approve the committee appointments. And, and this is, the board serves on many committees. It's just part of, part of, one of our duties is being liaisons and members of committees. And so we all self-select, and then if we all agree on the election, the self-selections, then we just can approve all of the selections as one. And so do we have?
I would like to make a motion for 11H to approve items 11H through Y as one motion as stated in the most recently updated list.
Excellent.
Second.
That was Barto. Okay, thank you. And let's go ahead, vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Ursoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Okay, so we basically just approved 11H through Y. Thank you, trustees. That was nice, a fast track. So we will now adjourn our organizational meeting and have a five-minute recess so we can reorganize the dais as we just voted. Thank you. Five-minute recess. Don't go too far. All right. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Calling the meeting back to order at 6:22. And we will begin with the student board member reports. Trustee Wigan?
So during the holidays, many groups organize philanthrop- philanthropic activities to serve those in needs. What are some of the activities occurring on your campus that are focusing on helping the community at large? And please share two campus highlights. So today, we have Victor Jimenez from Early College High School, if you would like to share.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Crane, members of the board, and esteemed guests. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Our topic for this night's report was how our schools are focused on helping the community at large. Currently, we have a battery drive where families can leave their batteries at school so that their batteries can be recycled efficiently. This positively affects everyone in our community because the management of battery waste is essential for preserving a healthy environment and maintaining public health in mind. Without property battery disposal, hazardous chemicals and batteries can contaminate soil and water. And as mentioned previously, this can pose a threat to the environment, wildlife, and our members of the community. Students are encouraged and incentivized to participate in the battery drive with house points. And as the house, the house with the most batteries at the end of the month will collect the most amount of house points. It's kind of like teams for our school. And now, I'd also like to mention that PTSA is hosting an event for the community as well in the form of a holiday craft fair, which will be hosted inside our school's NPR. And in addition to all of the fun activities that will be happening at the event, students will be able to create their crafts and sell them to community members. Now, I will be moving on to campus highlights that have happened since the last time I spoke here at a board meeting. One of our biggest events that has happened recently at Early College High School was our CASC event. For those who may not know, CASC stands for College Application Success Campaign. At this event, we dedicate time to celebrate our seniors as they walk down a vibrant row of posters to the main, to the NPR, where they get a special lunch, and they get to submit their college applications together. Although seniors are the main star of this event, there are also different aspects for all other students who are not quite applying just yet. Students young, students juniors through freshmen are separated by grade level to go to classrooms where guests, speakers, visit, and get a chance to inform high school students about their experience in college. The volunteers also answer questions that the students have about college. But what I think makes this a little special is that you get to hear a unique story from every one of the speakers. One speaker that was in my group, we did groups this year, we've had a panel before, but this year we're trying out groups, small groups with one speaker and a little limited amount of students. And the one speaker we were talking to gave me a different perspective on college that I had never really thought about before, which was the location of the college. And she was sharing about, like, how she really liked being close to home because she liked to go home for the holidays with her family, and that was really important to her. So getting all these personal stories gives students something else to think about college, not just something they can read online in an article. And for our second campus highlight, I chose to write about early colleges performing art shows. Recently, our dance team was able to put on a show in Costa Mesa High School's theater. The dancers had been preparing for the event the entire semester, and as, as an attendant of the spectacle, I can personally say it was phenomenal. The dance team can perform various, or they did perform various dances with the whole dance class, small groups, duos, and even solo performances, ending the event with an elaborate dance to holiday music. I was blown away but not surprised at the level of coordination and talent that our early college students had. This was the first time that the dance had put on a show in Mesa since COVID-19 and the, and the closure of the schools. I also had the chance to visit our winter guitar concert. The guitar class at school is a college course that is taught by our history of rock professor as well, and the guitar concert featured several different covers of songs, reimagined in ensemble pieces. Much like the dance team, the guitar class had songs with everyone playing, songs with small groups, duos, and even soloists, ranging from classical music to an electric guitar solo. The artistic prowess of these early college students allowed them to connect with the community and make the holidays even more special. So thank you for listening to me, and congratulations to all the new positions that the board members have achieved. Happy holidays.
Next, we have India Howerton from Costa Mesa.
Hello, and good evening to President Crane, Superintendent Smith, and my fellow community members. There are a number of groups organizing philanthropic activities for those in need, especially around the holidays. One community outreach event that our school does every year is sending the magical choir to sing at the Oasis Senior Center. I'm told that the residents look forward to this every year, and I'm glad that our choir can be a source of spirit. Our key club also hosts many service events throughout the year. This year for the holidays, they're helping out at the Share Ourselves event, and we'll be wrapping presents for those in need. Another thing happening at our school is the art classes' participation in the memory project. Students are given a photo of a child from a different country. Last year was Ukraine, and this year is Colombia. And they'll draw or paint that child and then send the paintings to them as a gift. While there are a number of exciting things happening around Mesa, today I want to highlight two specific campus activities. The first is our recent pre-voter preregistration drive. Some student volunteers and I paired up with Resilience Orange County in an attempt to increase the number of young voters. We went into the government classrooms and spoke about the history of voting and the importance of voting before handing out preregistration ballots and walking the students through filling them out. In the end, we were able to get 72 seniors at our school registered or pre-registered to vote. We're hoping to increase this number by opening it up to the junior class as well and holding drives on campus during lunch to make registration more accessible. Another campus highlight is the support being given to students leading up to finals week. If you're a student in high school or ever have been, you know that this is one of the hardest times of the year. Our school's ASV is making attempts to make this week as comfortable and smooth as possible in a few different ways. They're highlighting the wellness space as a safe space to go if you're feeling stressed or overwhelmed. They're hosting class events at lunch to boost morale among students, and they're planning a dress-up week for finals week with themes like fuzzy socks, pajama day, and bring a blanket. Overall, the dress-up week is a way to make sure that students are comfortable throughout their finals. With the school year halfway over, there have been many highlights on our campus. I am hoping that we'll finish off strong and have a successful start to the next semester. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Peyton Bovan from Corona del Mar.
Good evening, President Crane, Superintendent Smith, and esteemed board members. I'm Peyton Bovan, and I'm reporting to you today from Corona del Mar High School. During the season of giving, we at CDM do much to give back to the community and promote philanthropic activities. Around campus, different groups host various activities. However, I'm here to highlight two that happen within our ASV. First off, we participate and give to the Family Giving Tree organization. During this time, we collect gift cards of various amounts to give to those who need them to provide a great holiday. These gift cards may include grocery stores, stores to buy presents, or gas cards. We hope by giving these, we can help facilitate those who are low income to have a great holiday season without monetary stress or constraints. Another philanthropic opportunity we in ASV organize is actually in conjunction with Newport Harbor. As of this year, this will mark our second teddy bear toss. The toss is planned to coincide with our rivalry, boys' basketball Battle of the Bay game. Tried to say that five times fast. During this event, we encourage people to buy and bring teddy bears to bring to the game to participate. At halftime, we give the countoff and have spectators throw their bears onto the court. It's quite the spectacle to watch hundreds of stuffed bears soar through the air, I'll tell you that. We then collect the stuffed animals and donate them to spread some cheer within the community. Now, moving on to our campus highlights, this past week we had a busy schedule for our rally week, filled with fun spirit days such as fuzzy socks, puffers, and PJs, decorating the halls with wrapping paper, trees, and presents, and finishing off the week with our blowout holiday rally. This year's theme was A Charlie Brown Christmas, a personal favorite and nostalgic holiday movie for me and my family. It was a fantastic event filled with laughter and amazing videos. This rally is always the biggest one of the year, bringing in people from all different groups to perform. This year was super special as we had all the senior boy athletes join, performing comedic dances and garnering many cheers. The sports that participated ranged from football, tennis, soccer, lacrosse, wrestling, and water polo. The boys put on quite the show to say the least. We also had a fantastic show of actual dancers with our spirit squad, formerly known as Sparkle, which is our special ed dance team, our cheer squad, song, and orchestis. The teachers showed up with their adorable Snoopy dances, and we had great performances from our jazz band and triads, which is our all-girls a cappella singing group. Finally, we had our ASV dance, and not that I'm biased or anything, but I think we were the best. But then again, like I said last time, if you have a chance to check out the videos that were made for this rally, once it goes up on YouTube, I would highly recommend it because I can tell you they're cinematic masterpieces. As we move out of the fall season and into the winter season, we're also seeing a transition of sports teams and our performances. We have been continuously promoting our themed Kings Crew event, events for the upcoming sports and have more art showcases such as our choir's Winter Carol, the theater department's bite-sized theater, and band showcases. However, as breaks sneak up on us, that also means we are, we have finals right around the corner. So this Sunday, we have Finals Fiesta, which is an on-campus opportunity for teachers to open up their classrooms for last-minute study sessions with students, which is also accompanied by delicious taco platters from Al Rincido. So overall, it's been a busy season and first semester, but it's been a fantastic one, full of fun activities and events nonetheless. So happy holidays.
Thank you.
Next, we have our CSSE report, Amy Cheng. Whom I ran, ran into at Home Depot buying a Christmas tree.
Yes, we did.
How did your tree turn out?
Perfect.
Mine too.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Crane, trustees, cabinet, and guests. I wanted to congratulate everybody for their new board positions. We also, last week with CSSE had, had our board meeting, had elections. And president, the president position and the parliamentary position were up for election, and I won as president. And then Aurora Gomez, our incumbent, won again for parliamentary. And so that was great news for our election process. Also, at our board meeting, we approved the MOU with the district for the LMT1 positions, increased hours. And so we want to thank you for working with CSSE on that to support the students and the good work that's being done there. Also, we met with the district for the LMI training recently. That was a lot of fun. We did a lot of good work there. Most of our board attends that meeting, and I know Carrie Torres attends, and Kurt Sur, and Leona does also, and Ashley. Ashley normally comes with that. We did a lot of role-playing for listening, and I got paired with Wes, and he got to learn much more than he should have about my morning routine. So, sorry. One of the things that we talked about in there, we do a lot of work around communication because we know that communication is big throughout the district, right? We are always working to improve communication. Even if you think it's great, it can be better for, on all sides, for all of us. And one of the big pieces that we had there was listening, pausing, paraphrasing, all the different pieces that go along with being a good communicator. And one of them, the biggest things you can do is listen. So that was a great thing with that. And the takeout that we had was we were all supposed to be working on pausing. I'm trying to pause right now. Catch my breath? But also for me, I know listening, pausing also comes action. So as my role as president of CSSE, that's what I'm going to try to work towards, is listening and pausing, understanding and acting. I won't speak to CSAP program because it's a negotiated item, but I will say that we have 100 people here, more outside, in support of it, and they will be speaking. So thank you for listening. And then with that, I conclude. I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and I look forward to doing the good work with you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. We'll now move on to Rhonda Binder, Newport Mesa, NMFT.
So I can see, even though my font is so big, I think they can see it. Good evening, President Crane, trustees, Dr. Smith, cabinet, and guests here tonight. Last night, NMFT celebrated our union volunteers, site reps, committee members, executive officers. We had good food, great company, amazing raffle prizes, and most importantly, a thankful heart for all that they do for our union and their support of their colleagues at the school sites. As the holidays are upon us, we want to appreciate and thank all of our certificated professionals who are preparing for finals and wrapping up the first semester. We want to acknowledge our performing arts teachers who are working long hours during this time, before school, after school, with rehearsals. I trust that many of you are enjoying the performances and, and concerts across the district. I want to mention NMFT's support of CSSE's effort to have the CSAP. I won't read the whole, what it means. It's a, well, it's, it's a Classified School Employee Summer Assistant Program that's available to them. It's a classified school employee summer assistance program that's available to them. As we all are aware of the frustration for the teachers to not be fully staffed with the appropriate number of aides required for students. We know that we know that hiring aides has been difficult for our district and others. And since all the districts are vying for the same position to be filled, it seems that this would be a perk for our potential candidates and employees. I have spoken often during our HR meetings with the district about the extreme frustration our special education teachers are experiencing. Not having enough aides in their classroom is at the top of their list. It seems that anything NMUSD could do to entice the prospect of attracting and retaining more employees for these aides positions than we should do. So thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 15, community input on non-agendized items. And since Dr. Soylu is not here, our very experienced vice president, Wygen, will speak to that.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes. Three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By Order of Brown Act, section 54954.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
All right, thank you. So we have 14 submissions for the topic of CSESAP, which was just mentioned. So we are going to allow one and a half minutes per speaker. And if there is translation needed, then that would be an extra one and a half. I will call on Peggy Webster as the first speaker. One and a half, thank you.
Good evening, President Crane, Dr. Smith, and board trustees, cabinet. It threw me for a loop because mine's two minutes. But my name is Peggy Webster, and I am here to share with you my thoughts on behalf of the part-time staff at Newport Mesa for the CSAP, which is Classified School Employee Summer Assistance Program. This is a perfect opportunity for you, the leaders of our district, to show you care and value those who are in the trenches, those who are the backbone, the infrastructure of this fine institution. They are our everyday heroes. I ask you to lead by example and walk the talk. It's time to say you value... It's one thing to say you value our classified staff, but it means little unless you act like you do. Our district administration has expressed more than once that they're interested in participating in the CSAP, and that's great. But it seems that our part-time classified staff are not valued enough for them to agree to cover the small cost of this program. The actual cost of the program is negligible. It's a drop in the bucket compared to the many other programs that have been instituted in this district. By agreeing to participate in this program, you'll be showing our classified staff that you do care about them, about their families and their well-being. Your action at this time to support our part-timers in this way will far outweigh the nominal cost of the program. Find a way to work the budget without financially penalizing all of classified staff. I ask you, search your hearts. Do what's right.
Thank you.
Beyond the value of the almighty dollar.
Next, we have Ann Terry. After Ann is Crystal Gomez on deck.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Crane, and esteemed board members. My name is Ann Terry. I have proudly served the Newport Mesa Unified School District for the past five years as an instructional aide in special education. I am one of hundreds of 10-month employees who desire a summer position that ensures a consistent quality of life for 12 months instead of 10. My colleagues and I are here because we desire to partner with the district leadership to help make this a reality. This past summer, I was assigned to Wilson School and was looking forward to working with my Newport Mesa colleagues. Unfortunately, my husband became ill, and I was forced to quit my summer position through the district. I reluctantly had to post a GoFundMe account in order to put food on the table. I know in my heart that the summer assistance program would have been a valuable resource during this difficult time. It would have been a great relief knowing that the money I had saved throughout the year was available in this time of need. I urge you to implement the California School Employee Summer Assistance Program, which not only will show us the respect and appreciation of your deserving employees, but will make Newport Mesa Unified School District the shining star of Orange County.
Thank you. And next is Ira Sema McAllister.
Thank you, board members, for giving me the chance to speak. I am speaking on behalf of all of our elementary and secondary sites that are dealing with not having the chance to be able to even work over the summer. I was one of the school admin assistants that was on an elementary school site, and we don't have the option to be able to work for one month. And even with the little program that we have, this is a program that has already been approved by Governor Newsom, and it is already available to the state of California. And multiple schools are already implementing this. We're not asking you to break the bank. We're just asking you to give us a chance to have a program that can protect the members of our community and our school sites that are managing your students and taking care of us to at least have a chance to save a little bit of money on the side and assist us during either the month or the two months. Because this is going to be for our 11-month employees and our 10-month employees. I'm not the best at public speaking, but this is my honest truth of me knowing that I've already suffered the last year, not knowing that I wasn't going to be able to make enough being an 11-month employee, that I actually did a lateral move and went to the district office to be a 12-month employee because that was the next step for me, but that was my choice. But I want to be able to speak for the admins that can't do that and that are suffering and not having enough assistance just to be able to put some money aside. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. After Ms. McAllister, we have Lewis Truxton.
Good evening, members of the board. On December 5, 2021, I left my home in the middle of the night with my cell phone light leading my way because I was afraid for my safety. My name is Ira Sema McAllister, a school community facilitator at Costa Mesa High School, full-time classified employee working 10 months per year and a month. My day at work begins before students arrive. By 2:00 p.m., students start showing up at my office little by little. I have snacks for them when they're hungry. I celebrate their achievements and listen to them when they feel happy, angry, worried, or sad. Every day, I get to witness my colleagues' exceptional work, giving their very best in everything they do, and I learn about some of the most inspiring life stories that parents share with me. I love my job. Sadly, during the summer, I have to rely on loans and credit cards to pay for rent, food, and bills. I current debt I can't afford. Building a culture of kindness and understanding enhances the connections made between students, staff, and the community, and it needs to start with the school district. I'm asking you to please opt-in to participate in the CSAP program so we can continue focusing on assistant students and families, knowing that during the summer, kids like my son will have food when they're hungry, and people like me can afford having a home where we feel safe and can continue achieving our goals, professional and personal. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Truxton, followed by Pam Dickey. Followed by Pam Dickey.
Hello, NMUSD school board. My name is Lewis Truxton. I'm the lead behavior interventionist for NMUSD. I'm here to tell you why we should participate in this program. I'm a 12-month employee, and I would be unable to participate in this program, but I still believe it's a great opportunity to generate additional income, up to $6,000 per person for all of our 10- and 11-month employees. This program would help us all, all of our 10- and 11-month staff and their families over the summer months. This would especially help support our special education students and staff. Year after year, we lose staff over the summer months to other opportunities when they need to continue to work, to make money to survive. Our summer hours are not available to everyone, and they do not provide enough income to sustain anyone. Many of these staff members work with our students in special education, and their absence and rotation affects the students directly. The program would help ensure we maintain as many of our staff members as possible over the summer to prevent our students from suffering due to any of these unnecessary staff changes. NMUSD currently has an approved budget of $434.6 million for the 23-24 school year, and our current superintendent, assistant superintendent is combined for over $2 million of that budget. There are currently around 800 classified employees in NMUSD staff that would qualify for this program. If they all set aside the maximum funds, they would generate an additional $4.8 million in income for these classified employees. $0 of that income come from our 23-24 budget, all from the state. That's a pro. There is no con to it. I hope that you see for these reasons that it's essential that we, excuse me, that we enroll in this program. And I challenge you to invest in your staff so that they can continue to invest in their students.
Pam Dickey. On deck is Erin Bernardi.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you to our fellow union members from Tustin out there on the balcony. And I love seeing all our Costa Mesa High School students here tonight. My name is Pam Dickey, and I work at Costa Mesa Middle School. I'm here to ask for your support with the summer assistance program. Many of us would be willing and able to work additional hours in our positions, but extra time is not offered. Many of my coworkers work second jobs just to make ends meet. We sometimes hear, "If you want more money, find another job or go back to school." Well, some of us actually love our jobs. We love what we do, and we've chosen to work with children. I myself have worked as a nanny, a pediatric nurse's assistant, ran my own in-home daycare for 10 years, and finally, for the past 16 years, I've worked as an instructional assistant in special education with Newport Mesa. Again, we choose to work with children, and isn't that what this education is all about? At the end of the school year, we're given our letter of reasonable assurance that we'll retain our position the following school year. Receiving this notification means that we're unable to collect unemployment. Allowing your employees to invest our money in this valuable state program, it will help us for the summer months. The impact to this school district would be minimal, but the benefits to your employees would be immense. I'm asking you to reconsider your decision and start participating in this very...
Thank you, Pam. Erin Bernardi. And next is Karina Sosa. Yeah, Erin, you wrap, but on deck is... I announce the person.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Erin Bernardi. I've been an employee of Newport Mesa since 2006. I'm currently an independent facilitator at Costa Mesa Middle School. At the end of each year, I am faced with the same problem of finding employment in order to provide for my family. I find it difficult to work and at the same time find childcare for my son. The money that I earn throughout the summer is used to pay for childcare. I know I'm not alone in this. Most of the aides that I work with are mothers and fathers faced with the same problems. It would be extremely helpful for the district to offer the summer assistance program. This would be beneficial for myself, my family, and my fellow coworkers. And to end this, I just want to point over here, direct your attention. I make too much, said no in-class applied employee ever.
And after Karina is Griselda Becerra.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Karina Sosa. I'm an instructional assistant for special education. I'm here today on behalf of myself and my colleagues. We're asking for you to please opt-in to the California School Summer Assistance Program for the 2024 to 2025 school year. Thank you.
Griselda, and then we have Carmen Ramirez, next.
Good evening, superintendent and school board. My name is Griselda Becerra, and I have been working for the school district for 17 years. Every year at the end of the school year, I'm unhappy for another year well done, but I also worry because I don't know how am I going to cover my household expenses for the following two months. We, the classified employees, have an official duty to help the kids of the future. Classified personnel are essential workers, and we work very hard. We work hard for the kids and their prospering future and because we love what we do. For example, during the time of COVID, instructional assistants, VIs, office staff, bus drivers, kitchen staff, custodians, gardeners, et cetera, were asked to return to start the 2020-2021 school year, and we were there for the students and the school district. A majority of people from other jobs opted to stay on unemployment benefits for many months or reap the benefits of working from home. We're the ones who returned to work, sacrificed our health, and helped those around us to keep our schools running and operating for the kids who needed us. Now we need you. Please, opt-in for the summer assistance program. I think if you truly care about the well-being of your employees, this will be one of the best ways to show your support, not only for us, but for our families as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carmen Ramirez. And next is Estela Banderas Fuentes. Carmen.
Oh, you need Javier.
Oh, it did say.
Is Javier here?
Thank you, Carmen. Ms. Ramirez, you have one and a half minutes. And then you can translate one and a half.
Buenas tardes a todos. Felicidades a todos por sus nuevos puestos. Es una sorpresa para mí, pero muchas felicidades a todos. Queridos miembros del board, mi nombre es Carmen Ramirez. Soy líder comunitaria por más de 22 años y soy presidenta de Dilac, de los aprendices de inglés dentro de nuestro distrito. Y estoy aquí para que, por favor, ustedes, los miembros del board, elijan participar en el programa de asistencia de verano para empleados escolares de California para el año escolar. Yo tenía un resumen muy bien para ustedes, pero quiero decirles mis propias palabras que cada uno de los empleados que están aquí merecen esta oportunidad y este programa porque conozco padres solteros, madres solteras, que tienen que buscar trabajos extras en el verano para poder asistir a su familia, y ellos han dado mucho más que el corazón. En lo personal, puedo decir que tengo un hijo.
Good evening. I want to congratulate you, all the board members. I want to say that this was a surprise for me. My name is Carmen Ramirez. I am a community leader for 22 years, and I am the president of Dilac. Members of the board, I want to request for you to approve the summer assistance program. I want to say that all these employees, they are parents, that are single parents, and people that work very hard, and they have to look for extra work to make ends meet.
Tengo un hijo que fue diagnosticado con ansiedad general.
Thank you.
Oh, she's still. So one and a half, right?
Tengo un hijo que fue diagnosticado con ansiedad general, y hay miembros de aquí que son empleados y que son las 11 de la noche, y puedo hablar con ellos. Y ese tiempo no es pagado. Eso da en el corazón más allá de lo que deben de dar, y creo que ellos se merecen esto y mucho más.
Yes, I want to say that I have a son that has been diagnosed with anxiety. It is general anxiety. And I know members, employees, that I can call at 11 at night, and I can talk to them, and they are not paid at that time to talk to me, but they give their heart for me. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Estela Banderas Fuentes. And next after that is Sean Katz.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am a classified employee from Tustin Unified School. from Tustin Unified School District, working as a parent educator for special education. Last school year, I found myself struggling and drowning financially after the summer break. I was working three jobs and struggling to save money. When I heard about the four-year fight our district was dealing with for the California School Employee Summer Assistance Program, I jumped on this challenging quest to make it happen for our district. When I began this journey, I didn't only do it for myself. I did it for the classified staff and our families because I knew we were all in the same boat. I believe when we are at peace in our personal lives, we work with a better attitude and have less mistakes and better outcomes. We were able to make this happen in our school district even though our district believed we wouldn't have more than 10% of our eligible classified employees sign up for this opportunity. Unfortunately for them, they were wrong. Over 90% of our eligible employees signed up. We know California is dealing with a mild recession. Most of our state's classified staff is unfortunately struggling with this financial crisis, and our state sees this, and so it is offering us a breath of fresh air during these struggling times. It will not cost your district much compared to the benefits that it will bring your classified employees and to your schools. Take this opportunity to show you care for your classified staff. Say yes to CSAP.
Sean Katz. After that is Rain Vanderhoff.
Hi, Sean Katz with CSEA. And we've talked about CSAP for several years in this district. And the conversations with the administration have been really less than authentic and caring for implementing this program. The district has proven that money retains employees. And the superintendent of this district makes more than the President of the United States. And the executive cabinet that you see sitting before you here today make more than the superintendent of Public Instruction for California, who's over 6 million kids. And the last time there was a classification study done in 2016 in this district, the administration wanted classified to be paid at the 50th percentile level for Orange County. We're on education. That's an F. You want your classified employees to be paid at an F rate. But yet, the superintendent and chief negotiator who's talking about this thing is some of the highest-paid employees, 98th percentile in the state of California. And if you want something from this program, you have classified employees that will be happy, satisfied, and feel valued despite having to do more work due to shortages, employee burnout, lacking support, and yet they still come day in, day out to do this program. Board, I'm asking that you direct the superintendent to implement this program because it's the right thing to do, like the other 11 districts that have done this without negotiating because they've done it for the right reasons for their employees.
Thank you. Rain Vanderhoff. And after that is Louis Ilman.
Hi, I'm Rain Vanderhoff. I'm here to represent... I'm a staff member at Woody Elementary, and I help lead the after-school program. I am here to represent everyone from my site because we would love if you guys helped us with the Summer Assistance Program. Personally, my family... I live in the district of Wilson Elementary. My husband was laid off last year, and it was a really huge blow to our family. If this program was in existence, it would have helped me and my family so much. So, sorry. But my other staff at Woody Elementary, they read books to children after school, and they work really hard. They all work two to three jobs. So, that's all I really have to say. We love our work here for the district. We wouldn't choose anything else. We love it a lot. I think June and August are really rough months, and I just want to say I would appreciate it so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Louis Ilman. And the last one on the topic is Patricia Montez.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Luis Lamont, and I'm here representing the Orange County Labor Federation and our 97 different affiliated unions and 23,000 members, including the teachers of Newport Mesa Unified, standing here in support of the CSAP program. You know, we have an opportunity to support our classified employees. The state is offering you a hand and saying, "Meet us halfway" to make sure that we make an investment in our education. Investing in education is not just about investing in a building. It's about investing in people. And it's the people that make this building run, that make sure that our facilities are well-maintained, that make sure our students have the resources they need, and make sure our teachers have the support they need. You see folks here. They're here because this is a career, a livelihood, and a labor of love for them. And they're asking you to support them to make sure that they're able to continue to live and afford to live in this state and continue to support the great work of public education. This state has an opportunity. This district has an opportunity to meet that challenge and to make sure that employees are retained, students are happy, and we continue to put the public in public education. Because education is not for sale. It's for our students. Please accept CSAP, and please support the folks that makes this district run. Thank you.
Patricia Montez.
Good evening, board members. My name is Patricia Montez. I am an IA with a special education at Newport Heights Elementary. I love my job. I love my kids. I love being here. But as a sole provider, I've been a single parent due to domestic violence for about 12 years now. I am the sole provider for my children. And during the summer programs, I need to borrow money from loans, from the bank, from anybody that can lend me money so I can support my kids. I have to ask my... I'm the oldest of three sisters. We're Newport Mesa Unified students, alum. Thank you. And I have to ask my sisters for money to be able to pay my bills during the summer. And when school starts, I sadly can't take my kids' school shopping for clothes, for school supplies, because it's either buying them new stuff and having to figure out how I'm going to pay my rent. And it's sad to me that I have a good job. I love what I do, but I cannot afford the summer school program during the summer. Because of my letter of employment, I don't qualify for government assistance. I can't apply for CalFresh or CalWorks because they're like, "Well, you're going to get your job back, right?" I'm like, "Yes," but I don't get paid... We start in August. I don't get paid till October.
Thank you. We are now moving to the topic on T-Winkle. We have three speakers who require interpretation services. First in line is Irma Mora. Next is Chitlali Ponce. So, Irma, are you here? Irma? And so now, the topic is T-Winkle for the next three. And we have Irma, Chitlali Ponce, and Sarah Garcia.
Buenas tardes a todos, especialmente a la mesa directiva. Yo vengo a darles las gracias de parte de la escuela T-Winkle por escucharnos y apoyarnos, ya que había un problema sobre una consejera. Y gracias a ustedes, ya hay un gran cambio para nuestra escuela. Con las dos consejeras que ahora están trabajando muy bien con nuestros estudiantes. También les quiero dar las gracias al superintendente y a la gran directora que tenemos, la señora Sánchez, y también que ha hecho un gran cambio para la escuela. Nuevamente les doy las gracias. Buenas tardes.
Good evening, everybody, especially to the board members. I come here because I want to thank you on behalf of the school, the T-Winkle School, for hearing us and for supporting us. There was a problem with a counselor, and thank you, and because of what you have done, there's been a change for the whole school with two counselors now that are working very well with our students. I want to thank you, superintendent. Thank you. And to our principal, Ms. Sánchez, because she has done a great change for our whole school. Thank you again. Good evening.
Thank you. Chitlali Ponce.
Buenas tardes, señor superintendent, miembros de la junta. Mi nombre es Chitlali Ponce. Vengo en representación de los padres de la escuela T-Winkle. Hace unos meses estuve parada frente a ustedes dándoles a conocer la problemática que teníamos con respecto a una de las consejeras de la escuela. Hoy nuevamente estoy aquí con ustedes, frente a ustedes, para agradecerles todo el apoyo que nos dieron, nos escucharon, y gracias a ustedes tenemos una nueva consejera. La semana pasada estuvimos en lo que es la reunión de ELEC, donde ellas se presentaron la forma en la que están trabajando, cómo están trabajando con nuestros niños. Muchos de los padres están muy contentos porque han visto los cambios en sus hijos. Han visto el empeño que están poniendo en sus clases, la participación que tienen con los maestros. Y es grandioso para mí decirles gracias. Y vamos por buen camino. Tenemos una excelente directora, un gran equipo de trabajo en nuestra escuela T-Winkle, y ahora con estas dos consejeras que están trabajando súper bien con nuestros niños, vamos a crear muy buenos alumnos para el futuro. Gracias.
Good evening, superintendent, board members. I'm here representing T-Winkle parents. A few months ago, I was standing here because I was asking for help for the counselor in T-Winkle. Here today, I'm standing before you to thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you for hearing us. Thank you because we have a new counselor. Last week, we had the ELEC meeting, and the counselors introduced themselves, and they introduced what they were working and how they were working with the students. You can see a lot of changes, and parents are participating more, and this is wonderful. Thank you. We are in a good path, and we have an excellent principal and staff. Thank you. I don't have words.
Thank you. Next is Sarah Garcia de Calderón.
Buenas tardes, señor superintendent y miembros de la junta. Mi nombre es Sarah Garcia de Calderón. Quiero dar las gracias por haber escuchado nuestra petición del reemplazo de la consejera en la escuela T-Winkle. Hemos visto mucho el cambio para nuestros estudiantes, para nuestros hijos y la escuela, y para los padres también. Muchas gracias por escucharnos.
Good evening, superintendent and board members. I want to thank you for hearing us. Thank you because you heard for our petition to replace that counselor from T-Winkle School. The changes have... We can see the changes. They're good, and they're good for our students and for the school and for us as parents. Thank you very much for hearing us and for hearing our petition.
Next, we have another topic. Mr. Rudy Kraus on Olympic Games. Mr. Kraus, please remember that we do not listen to comments that are not under our jurisdiction, so just keep that in mind.
Well, you might be a little bit confused too about jurisdiction because Dr. Smith just spoke about masks. Isn't that out of jurisdiction, Ashley?
The Olympic Games are not part of our jurisdiction.
I'm talking about training. And that's what allows me to talk about Olympic training for kids. Do you guys have long-distance runners? I would like to talk about long-distance runners. I can't talk about long-distance running?
Sorry.
No?
It is not under our jurisdiction, your topic, sir.
Oh, so long-distance running is not in your jurisdiction? That's a phony argument. What you're saying is that Rudy Kraus is not in your jurisdiction, and you don't want anyone to listen to Rudy Kraus because Rudy Kraus contradicts the Board of Education. The man speak.
By order of the Brown Act, section 54954.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agenda items. The superintendent may provide clarification. But, thank you. We will now move on to superintendent's comments.
Yeah, I would just say to Amy, congratulations to you and those recently elected. We've enjoyed working with the E-Board and your membership. As she said so accurately, I can't comment on negotiations or what people are doing in other places, but we remain optimistic that there can be a mutually agreeable solution. That's all I can share.
All right. Vice President Wygen, do you want to read 17? We don't have any, do we? All right, we can skip item 17. And now we move on to achievement, professional development updates and overview by Assistant Superintendent Shields.
Thank you. I am going to introduce the team, and they're going to need a moment to just get set up and get their PowerPoint going. But every month, the board is asked that we bring forward achievement data. And today's data really is about the people behind the data, the people that are supporting our students as they reach these achievement milestones. And so what you'll hear tonight is about alignment, is about our commitment to improvement, about our team approach, and we really want to show appreciation and gratitude for the employees who work directly with students and their drive to be their best and our organizational efforts to support them in that journey. Thank you.
Good evening, President Crane, members of the board, Dr. Smith, staff, and guests. Our team is excited to share information tonight about how we develop and support our staff. Tonight, we're going to share our PD goals in format, an update on our Educator Effectiveness Block Grant, some current data from a PD survey we do annually now, and some highlights and next steps from training this year. Our PD is always aligned to our goals, and so specifically aligned to Board Goals 1 and 2. We have a commitment to providing high-quality instruction and supports for all, some, and few students in a variety of ways. We do that in a variety of formats, so we offer a lot of different opportunities for our teachers. So some of those include Moonlight Series, which is what we call our after-school professional development sessions. We have sessions offered on minimum days and during late start. We have Park Day using roving substitutes, meaning that a team of teachers could be released for maybe two hours of the day or half a day, so not the whole day. And then we have some independent opportunities for teachers to learn. We also have full days. We offer training in the summer. We have district PD days, which are required paid days that are dedicated to professional development. And then we also have PD offered on school days, which we do limit because we don't want teachers pulled out too much, but we do offer some using floater teachers, which you'll hear about later, and substitute teachers. And we offer it in a lot of different ways. So we have TOSSAs that provide training. We offer demonstration lesson-type training, coaching and mentoring, collaboration sessions, virtual sessions. We sometimes bring in consultants or have teachers attending conferences. And PD is really about what to teach and how to teach. So there are the logistics of just, we have core programs. We need to train teachers on how to use them, content knowledge, the standards themselves. And then there's pedagogy, your teaching method. your teaching methods. So how do you elicit and respond to student thinking? What are some strategies to get students talking in the classroom, get students writing, scoring calibration, classroom management, other types of training on, on the how? And here's an example of what we mean when we talk about the what to teach. We do provide ongoing training to support all of our curriculum adoption. So this is a graphic that illustrates our elementary curriculum adoption timeline. So for example, this year, as you know, we just adopted a new history social studies curriculum, social science curriculum for TK5, and we did provide training, we're continuing to provide training and ongoing support for the rollout of that curriculum. Next year, we'll have a heavy focus on math, but then we also have some supplementary curriculum we provided training on, so a new phonics supplement, bridge to reading, Right From the Beginning, which is a supplemental writing program. And then you'll see at the, at the very bottom, we want to sustain and support all of those programs. So just because this is the initial year of the history social science curriculum, that doesn't mean the training ends there. We, we have to provide ongoing support, not just for new teachers, but, but for all teachers and really try to sustain the initiatives that we start. And now Vanessa's going to talk to us about how we pay for all this training.
Good evening, board members, President Crane and Cabinet and of course, guests. We're really pleased that we were able to get the over five and a half million dollar block grant to support educator effectiveness. And really what we want you to know is it's for educators that are both professional as teachers and professional as paraprofessionals, as classified employees. And so really the funds are meant to work with anyone who works directly with pupils. So if you're not working directly with pupils, these funds can't support that professional learning, not that it can't happen other, under other funding. These funds are also five-year funds, so available through '25, '26, and the plan was approved in December of 2021. If anyone wants to read the educator effectiveness block grant plan, they can find it on our website and our district plans webpage. Really, our professional learning is meant to support the whole child. And so you see that in, in every single slide that we're, we're launching with our professional development and with our meetings with our professionals throughout the district. So academics, behavior, social, emotional, mental health, those are the FOCI. And really, we want you to know that this is ongoing. The grant allows us to provide multi-year sustainable plans. And then one of the components that we're looking at for effectiveness is surveys. And so we've been conducting the surveys on November 1st. It's a captive time to work with the audience who's just received some professional learning and it gives us some pretty high response rates. So the allowable categories that we have leaned into as a district are really about that coaching and mentoring of staff, looking at things that lead to standards aligned and effective instructional practices, looking at things that will reengage pupils in the learning and also lead to their accelerated learning, thinking about our school climate and the student well-being and ways to be inclusive so that students are feeling safe and heard and really engaged, thinking about an education that supports all students and especially our English learner students, and of course, we don't want to forget our early childhood education. So the staff was surveyed in fall of 2021. We have elementary certificated, secondary certificated and instructional assistance in both a multiple choice and really asking a lot about format as well as content. At the time, you remember, we were very hybrid and so we didn't have many in-person opportunities. And you'll note that we had 85 instructional assistants respond. Now look at this one. We're very proud that 177 instructional assistants responded in our survey. We were very intentional about trying to provide more opportunities for that particular group who works directly with our students when we did our professional learning this year, so we're, we're pleased with those results. Satisfaction, 88.5% of respondents said that they were satisfied with the overall professional development programs, so we're pleased about that. And in general, the PD opportunities that were provided positively impacted instructional practices and were relevant to 82 and 83% of respondents. So we know that a lot of what we have been able to offer has been landing well. And then we asked also an open-ended question, what else would you like to learn about? We asked them to sort of rank some of the things we're already offering, but then we really wanted them to weigh in. And so of these open-ended responses, the things that were provided that were responded by more than 100 people, which was 298 was the top, all the way down to 114. And so this gives us the opportunity to think about our future planning. When we're thinking about our special populations or differentiated instruction, thinking about the social, emotional learning or classroom management or any of the other tools you see here, what that really is allows, allows us to do is focus on the short term and the long term, even after the funding is gone. Now we want to highlight some of our professional development that we've delivered over the last year.
So as Vanessa mentioned, we have increased the amount of professional development we've provided to our instructional assistants, really making an investment in them as partners in the classroom. So we have a lot of types of IAs. We have special education IAs, general education, expanded learning that work in our after-school programs, early learning, we have aides in our TK program. And so we've really offered a variety of training for them, including behavior management, active supervision, instructional practices. We've been, we've really made an effort to include them. We did in 2022, but even more so this year by offering training to them on our annual PD day so that they could actually come and participate with the teachers on that day. Our elementary principals are actually also receiving training. They attend training with their teachers on all of our initiatives, but then we've also had some really specific administrator sessions aligned with those initiatives. So one example of that is we had a series of walkthroughs where a group of principals, four to six principals with some district administrators, walks through classrooms looking for something very specific. So this week and last week, we were walking through classrooms looking at implementation of thinking maps and then having collaborative conversations about that. We've also featured in the picture is a walk we did looking at early learning environments and looking at the trajectory from our preschool programs up through second grade and then also looking at integrated ELD. And so we're really trying to have some focused conversations about instruction with our principals as part of their PD. And then teacher sessions have focused on thinking maps, writing, early literacy, Studies Weekly, our new history social science curriculum, language development, we have educational technology. We offer a wide variety of topics, so there's mandatory training on some of our key initiatives, but then there are also always opportunities for teachers who want to do more, who want to learn more, to opt into some sessions that are after school and in the summer. And we had an experience this year and last year, which was really effective, which was our, our pre-K to grade two teachers participated in a demo lesson experience. So as I mentioned, we rolled out a new Phinney McA awareness and phonics curriculum. So we brought in a trainer. So you'll see in the picture, you can see that the trainer is teaching a lesson with a group of kids, Newport Mesa kids, a classroom of kids, and you can see the adults sitting in the back. So that, we brought together all the kindergarten teachers to actually go watch a lesson in kindergarten and then debrief with the trainer about what she did, her instructional moves. And we did that last year from pre-K up to grade two in Phinney McA awareness, and then we did it this year with kindergarten and first grade and phonics. And it was a really high impact activity for teachers. We also have TOSSAs that provide those kind of in-class demo experiences, more for smaller groups, like maybe a fifth grade team at one site will collaborate with a TOSA. The TOSA will model something and then the teacher will, you know, try out those same strategies. And then our elementary support teachers, as you know, we have full-time support teachers at all of our sites, two at our Title I sites, and those teachers have committed to Letters, which is Language Essentials for Teaching of Reading and Spelling, which is an intensive two-year program about the science of reading, really teaching them all of the components of literacy and, and how literacy develops. And so we've invested in this program for them. It went really well last year. They're now in year two. Anyone that has just joined the position this year would start in year one. And they come together every couple of months for an in-person session, but then a lot of the learning is on their own or practical application in their classrooms. And then we also bring them together every month for additional professional development with our TOSSAs. And this year, we actually opened up Letters to Classroom Teachers. So it, it is a really time-intensive program, but we did open it up to classroom teachers. And we have 36 classroom teachers in the primary grades that are going through this intensive training, which we're really proud of. There's a total of 123 teachers enrolled this year. That's a combination of support teachers, classroom teachers and TOSSAs that are taking this training. And Sarah's going to talk about our counselors.
Thank you. So good evening. So we continue to, of course, provide professional development to our certificated staff outside of teachers, but really specifically wanted to highlight our elementary counselors. So again, thank you for your support. We're super grateful to have our full-time elementary counselors at every elementary school. This year, we have really focused on our tier one and tier two supports for students, so really looking at how we can collaborate and learn together with our behavior specialists to support student behavior within the classroom, so supporting our teachers as well as supporting at that tier two level for behavior. We've worked cross-divisionally, so we're working with departments outside of student services and outside of our elementary schools to learn cross-departmentally. So we invited CTE to come for the beginning of the year professional development so that we can really start to talk about what CTE can look like for some of our youngest learners and work with our community partners again to bring in that expertise about behavior. So that was our focus for November 1st, is bringing in one of our community partners to provide that learning for our elementary counselors.
So on top of all of that wonderful professional development happening at the elementary level, we also have a lot of opportunity for our secondary teachers to also engage in PD. At the secondary level, one of the focal points of the professional development is with our secondary instructional coaches. These are classroom teachers at each of our sites in various content areas who are really tasked with the role of delivering the message of our district-wide secondary initiative, which is eliciting and responding to student thinking. So we are now in year three of that instructional initiative and our instructional coaches come together on a monthly basis to look at how we can provide support for our teachers and all of our secondary campuses in that realm. They co-construct trainings and then go back to their site, contextualize it for, for our unique, the unique needs at our sites and then deliver it to their staffs. So in the fall this year, the focus was on a strategy called idea building. Just this last week, we co-created a PD session that'll be happening in the winter on a strategy called Write, Converse, Write. And this has grown out of a partnership that we've had with one of the leading researchers, researchers in this area named Jeff Swears. So in addition to looking at kind of how we attack instruction, we've got to look at also the specific content areas. So we provide professional development using the, kind of the lens of eliciting and responding to student thinking, but looking at it through the content areas of math, science, English, ELD, history, PE, arts, CTE, all of the different content areas. So part of that is focused on how do we just deliver the board-adopted curriculum and also engaging in conversation around pedagogy and what are the best ways for us to be able to instruct students in all of those areas? And as a part of that, we, we are developing assessments that will, will be able to help us gauge how students are growing in each of those areas. One of the most impactful ways that we can bring teachers together is through facilitated collaboration. Here, we're fostering ongoing learning from the other PD sessions. So when we've talked about what are we doing specifically within our content area in a science training, or we've looked at eliciting and responding, we want to explore that more, putting teachers at a table together to be able to kind of build upon their learning facilitated by members of either our TOSA team, district staff, and then having conversations around how we provide targeted supports for students that represent special populations. So it's not enough just to know how to provide, you know, an instructional approach for everyone in your class, but making sure that we're taking into account the special needs that our English learners, our students experiencing poverty, our students with special needs and other special populations to ensure that they're getting access to the curriculum. In addition to that, we're engaging in conversations about alignment between zones, ensuring that what's happening within a zone at the elementary, middle and high school are all going to build upon one another. And then again, with the common formative assessments and how those can help leverage further success for kids. In addition to that, an additional professional development kind of realm that we're now able to get back into now that we're not living in, in the, in a COVID world is the opportunity to extend our professional learning and networking at conferences. So this year, we've been able to have teachers have professional networking opportunities in lots of different content areas and a lot of different endeavors. And the picture you're looking at is recently a team from Kellybrook attending an Avid conference in Indiana. We touched upon elementary principals. Our secondary principals, we view as our key instructional leaders. And so it's worthwhile for us to invest in their professional development as well. And the best way that we go about doing that is through our secondary principal meetings. Really, the focus of those meetings is not on the nuts and bolts or the logistics of running the school district. Certainly, those are important. We spend time having that discussion, but really it's focused on the role that they play as the instructional leader, as the, kind of the, the chief instructional leader on their campus. And so we've been working with our principals in their role in supporting the implementation of eliciting and responding to student thinking. During those meetings, the reason why I've got a picture of a classroom in here with kids is that our, much in the same way that our elementary counterparts have been doing, our secondary principals are doing strategic walkthroughs in classrooms and we're engaging in conversations around what's the most effective way for us to be instructing our students and then also having a conversation about what are the best ways for us to be able to provide feedback for our teachers in order to coach our teachers along. We know that all of our teachers, even our very best teachers, will respond and grow if we provide, you know, ample coaching. We engage in conversation around leadership development and we have more recently began adopting that model of classroom walkthroughs and a focus on instruction even in our assistant principal meetings, recognizing of course, that they too are also instructional leaders on our campuses. So one growth area that we are already embarking on is to engage in work around aligning the work that elementary and secondary are doing. One of our assistant superintendents loves to use the phrase, and I, and I really enjoy it, that we are a K-12 district and that is a superpower of ours and that if we can capitalize on all of the things that are happening at elementary and receive those strategically and methodically when they arrive to middle school and high school and ensure that there's a continuum of instruction happening and that we create systems to do so, that our students are going to achieve higher as a result of it. And so in the coming months and years, you will see greater alignment between the elementary and secondary systems so that we can build that in for kids. Our belief is that when a student arrives in Newport Mesa and starts going through schools, they shouldn't have to relearn how to learn or relearn how to write or relearn how to read every year, that if we can create a continuum, if we can create a system between elementary and secondary, our kids will benefit. The picture that you're looking at is just the beginning of evidence of that. A week and a half ago, we had a learning walk between the upper elementary teachers at Ray Elementary and then our middle school teachers at Tijwinco, Enson and Mesa. That school kind of feeds three different, three different middle schools and it was focused around, the conversation was around Avid. It was, it was really powerful to have the elementary teachers walk into the room of their middle school classrooms and see those kids in action and really be wowed by the amazing things that were happening. And it affirmed the work that they did as elementary teachers, knowing that their investment was kind of, you know, paying dividends as they were making it into secondary. So the, the teachers were able to kind of walk through classrooms and see what was happening, but then spend time making intentional plans to make sure that, that we're laying the proper foundation in elementary and that we're receiving the kids appropriately. I think the elementary teachers appreciated, they kind of had rock star status when they were walking through those classrooms. So we are looking to replicate that type of work more and more. So all of what we've just talked about, all of those different realms that our teachers are receiving PD, a lot of it is made possible by a resource that we have available in our school district called our PD floater teachers. Our floater teachers are credentialed teachers on a full contract, but not assigned to their own classroom. It's a creative solution to be able to provide professional development for teachers. We're still living in an era where there are shortages for teachers, shortages of subs, but because we have a group of 12 full-time teachers, we have a guaranteed ability to provide articulation, training, professional development to a group of teachers every single day. And so a coordinated effort between Lori and I in the elementary and secondary department, we put together a PD plan to be able to provide all the PD that we just talked about. And it is because we have these high-quality teachers, those floater teachers that are stepping into the classroom for our teachers to be able to step out for a day to be able to engage in this process. And as Vanessa mentioned, it is funded by the educator effectiveness block grant. And if you hear the term floater teacher, it is worth distinguishing that there's different versions of it in our district. There's also a team of special ed and general ed floater teachers helping to cover some of those, the shortages due to the, the sub shortage. But specifically having a team focused on, focusing on professional development has been valuable. Lori will add to that and you get to see their lovely faces.
So these are our floater teachers. So we went through a process of, you know, an application process and a hiring process. They are elementary credentialed teachers because it was a lot easier to take an elementary teacher that's trained from, you know, TK to six and, and have them do all the grade spans than to take a high school math teacher and put them in kindergarten. It's just, it's worked out better this way. It's been easier as far as training and, and implementation. And, and they are a great team of people. They have, they, we have, you know, occasional staff meetings with them and we're really trying to develop their skills. We provide them training and then like Keith mentioned, they are our team that goes out and releases teachers so we can provide all of these opportunities. So we just wanted to show you who they were because they are Newport Mesa staff members. And many of them came from other positions, either part-time teacher positions in our district. One was a full-time teacher that just wanted to try something different and so they, they serve a variety, they've served a variety of roles in our district, but right now they're, they are our floater team. So moving into our next steps, obviously, we want to continue doing what we're doing because we- because we do feel it's working. We are seeing results. We are seeing high satisfaction rates with PD. We do have work still to do with writing, with Phoebe McBourne's and phonics, with all of our initiatives. We have to provide ongoing training and support, moving into less training and more in-class coaching and demo lessons and other types of support with our initiatives. And then we also, of course, are going to look at the best ways to provide job-specific training for instructional assistants, counselors, and then other staff with specialized roles. So not everyone's a classroom teacher. What can we provide for all these other certificated and classified roles in our, in our system? And then also, of course, continue to support our curriculum adoption. So moving into next year, we'll have a heavy focus on math. And then seeking alignment, as Keith mentioned, with the secondary programs and initiatives, we have started to collaborate on how we can make that transition from upper elementary to middle school better for our students.
And similarly, our next steps in secondary would be to continue the good work that we're already doing. So, you know, that continued focus on student voice through eliciting and responding to student thinking, strengthening our teachers' pedagogy and their content areas. So that's the what they teach. That calibration piece of all of our district-adopted curriculum, ensuring access for our English learners, our students with disabilities, our students experiencing poverty. And then, as Lori mentioned, that alignment piece with our elementary programs as well. So thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to share with you all of the professional opportunities that are happening in Newport Mesa. And at this time, we open it up to questions.
Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. I was wondering, I love that you guys got an amazing amount of survey responses. It's great to see that. I was wondering, since we only have this likely, the funding for a few more years, are we planning on the section that had the allowable categories? Are we planning to do program evaluation for those? So maybe one or two of those we would pick to continue on after the grant ends? Or how are we, how are we evaluating which of these is successful? I know we often talk about the staff piece, but I want to know which of these going forward is the one that we want to stick with and what the plan would be?
So we do program evaluation. We do it in a lot of different ways. Some of it is anecdotal, some of it is observational, some of it is just a review of funds as we go through the LCAP process, as we go through planning processes, strategic planning. So it doesn't have to be this funding dependent. We also know that coming off of the COVID years, there was a lot we needed to do, as well as really, the emphasis you've heard is on alignment, right? It's a new day. We have kids coming to us with new needs and new perspectives, and we want to make sure that we're adjusting properly. So it's going to evolve, and it's not going to be any one thing. It's not going to be only thinking maps, and it's not going to be only handwriting without tears, and it's not going to be only articulation in certain areas. We're going to keep learning and evolving, and so we're going to look at which practices seem to be producing the most fruit, and then making sure that we're doing both the site-level piece, focusing on that instructional coaching, as well as the district level, and really ongoing evaluation. So we're not just going to pick the one, and it's not going to end once the funding ends. It may look different. It may look narrower, right? But also, we have to look at what other adoptions are coming down the pike and what new needs are surfacing.
Great. I'm glad that we're doing all of that. And then I also was wondering, kind of similarly to on the elementary teacher side with having the TOSAs come in and do in-class demonstrations, which I love, and I love that we're still focusing on the science of reading. I was wondering if there is a time ever to do kind of like a follow-up or a next step or similar to what you guys were talking with some of the co-creation? Does that happen as well within, I know sometimes that doesn't happen with literacy, so like, is there a follow-up kind of next step conversation after those TOSAs teach the lesson?
Yeah, so it usually is kind of a cycle where they meet, they plan, the TOSA teaches, and then they have a planning session afterward to go, you know, into maybe their next unit and say, how can we apply this? Yeah.
Good. I think that... Victor?
So I wanted to comment on the continuation of learning from elementary to middle school. I think that's really good. And I'm not surprised you guys are seeing results, but I was wondering how exactly you guys made the transition smoother of learning from elementary to middle school?
Great question.
Yep, thank you. Great question. So really, what we are intending to continue to do is to look at, you know, take a math as an example. So as students are making their way through their math journey in elementary school, and then they head into middle school, ensuring that the topics that are being covered and the areas of emphasis, and even the language that we call certain things in a math classroom are similar or the same as what they are going to be when they, when the students arrive in middle school, and then the same thing when they move from middle to high school. You know, math is kind of the classic example. We could be doing the same problem, but calling it different things. But if we get on the same page around language and approach, then we believe our students will be less confused as they go through their K-12 journey.
That sounds awesome. Thank you.
Trustee Wiegand?
Thank you. So I love training of teachers and getting them to use, you know, these techniques in class. So how do we monitor our teachers to make sure that they're, that these strategies, that their learning is actually being implemented?
So that, that's really the key purpose of the principal training and the walkthroughs that we're doing. And so we're taking a team of administrators, and it's not necessarily a gotcha, it is a conversation around what does your staff need more training on? We're not seeing this, you know, these writing strategies implemented. We're seeing this, what can we do for your staff? And then that's where we provide targeted support. So that's been the conversation around, how can TOSAs come in and support a certain grade level? How can the administrator and I collaborate to move a teacher along? So it's really, it's really kind of, we're now in that phase of like assessing implementation of all these trainings we've had, and then it's about designing the right supports to get everyone moving forward.
That's great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question. You had mentioned training for special populations, so that would be, say, the English learners or special ed students. Can you speak to the gifted and talented education and also the fact that once they move on to middle to high school, what happens there? And how does a student who's not necessarily an AP student, but is very bright, but is in a regular class because there's no honors being offered? How are you offering that support to the teachers so they can also, in return, support the student in the classroom?
I'll speak to the elementary, and then I'll pass it on to Keith. So one of the things that we've done as a result of just input from parents and teachers and all, everyone we speak to is really looking at our GATE program. And we know maybe it kind of lost its focus through the pandemic years. And one of the things, one of the key things we've done this year is changed the teacher training for teachers of gifted students to being optional, to being required. So in the past, it was, it was something teachers could opt into is going to an after-school series of sessions that were outsourced through the county office. And what we've done is we've brought that in-house, and we've actually offered a training this year, and we queried every child, every teacher who has a child in their class that's been identified as gifted. And we have used our floater subs to actually bring them out to a PD. And it was actually about using depth and complexity with thinking maps. So taking a current initiative, and now how do you differentiate for those students who are identified as gifted? So trying to, so we're in the process of really recreating an internal certification. So we gain control over that teacher training. For us in elementary, that's the biggest kind of action step we're taking right now.
Yeah. So similarly, as an elementary, we seek to embed it into the work that we're doing. So when we talk about those trainings in pedagogy or the teacher articulation time, it's really looking at examining what ways we differentiate instruction for the unique needs. And if it's for gifted or advanced learners, that becomes part of the conversation. I sat with a group of seventh-grade math teachers today, and we engaged in that very discussion. In addition to that, it's pulling those teachers together and having the conversations between schools. So one piece of work that we've started doing this year, or continue doing this year, is looking at our enhanced math pathways at the secondary level. Those are a lot of really accelerated students. And bringing our teachers together by zone and then also between grade spans to examine how are we providing advanced instruction for those students?
I just want to jump in on, you might be asking, how do we pay for that? So it's not just educator effectiveness. And in this specific example with GATE, when we really wanted to augment what we were doing, you know, GATE is for all kids in all schools, right? And so we have both Title II funds and Title IV. Those are federal funds. And we really leaned into the Title IV funds for the well-rounded academics, and that's really supporting some of this expansion of the work with consulting and other experiences for kids in that area. And then Title II funds have supported at TOSA because you have to coordinate, you have to really check in, you have to make sure that you're nurturing this work. And so that's not the full scope of work. But again, thinking about, the work doesn't end when the educator effectiveness block grant ends, and so we look for lots of different creative ways to blend and braid the funding to make sure that we're serving our kids.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
We now move on to our consent calendar, item 19. Do I have a motion to adopt the calendar? Consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
Okay, trustee. Oh, sorry. Oh, trustee Wiegand. Was it Anderson and then second by Wiegand?
Opposite.
Opposite.
Yes. Okay. Moved by Wiegand and seconded by Anderson. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I had some questions about 19 before the Student Behavioral Health Incentive Program. Couple of questions. A few of them I sent in, and one of them is just more kind of a question for all of us. Where did the funds go specifically for this grant? I know that some of it's, quite a bit of it's reimbursing Medi-Cal, but how does that all work?
Yeah, so we are eligible through this program to receive approximately $176,000 that would support some of our Medi-Cal students' access and connection to services. That money can come through us, and we can assign, we can connect, be a connector of resources for families to basically charge against that $176,000. Or we could localize those funds here and hire, for example, a social worker to provide services and connections for families. So there's flexibility with how we use that fund.
Do we have a plan for what we're thinking, or we have further analysis before we decide on how we want to assign those funds?
We've discussed briefly about what we think would probably be the best option for us using those monies. We are looking at potentially hiring a social worker as an additional resource for our district.
And then I understand that this is all with parental involvement, and I think that's really wonderful. What, there's one little thing. For the data that's collected in conjunction with the Mental Health Student Services Act, how does that impact the parental involvement? I know that there's some items there that might, well, maybe, I'll just let you answer.
Yeah, so when we look at collecting data for research grants such as this, where, you know, when they're interested in figuring out, how are you utilizing these funds? They're really looking at the amount of services or contacts that a school district, in our case, would be making with those families. And so if you have, for example, a social worker who's hired with these funds, we would be looking at a case management program where we'd say, okay, this social worker's been working with 50 students, and those 50 students have met with them three times. So that's kind of letting us know what that volume is. And again, I do want to reiterate that this is all with a parent, you know, engaged in this process, looking for assistance, asking for help, being part of that process. But when we look at data, we're looking at how many contacts do these individuals have? Now, if we didn't hire a social worker and we just used resources that are available through the county and use that $176,000 to pay for those, we would be collecting data on where students went and what type of services they received to be able to turn that over.
Thank you. And then last question. With these contacts and sometimes with, and as a parent who's had the benefit of district resources myself, I'm very appreciative, and I think that the social worker sounds like a great way to solve a lot of those issues. How do we look at how we're going forward with those students? Because a lot of times, people, you know, we don't want to just keep, we want students to get better if possible. Is that part of the tracking that we're looking at through all of this? Or is it just we're calculating how many contacts we have?
No, we look at, we currently do that now. So with our social workers that we have, we evaluate their cases and who they're working with, and they're fluid. Because not all families need assistance ongoing for multiple years on end. That's a very fluid model that we have. And school sites know how to lean into the system to be able to access social worker support for their school site and for a family. So we would want to make sure that through this work, we are empowering families and providing them with resources that give them that opportunity to be self-sustainable and have their own resources so that they would not necessarily need to continuously rely on social worker support. That's our, that's our interest. Having said that, we always want to make sure that if somebody needed some level of ongoing support, we would be able to do that for them.
Thank you. So the process kind of goes, parents would reach out and potentially a social worker would work with them and determine that. And then we would connect them with the appropriate services. That's what we're thinking with this program?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And the coordination, right? Because that's one of the...
Do we have any other questions?
Go ahead. I think that's a good comment.
Trustee Anderson?
Well, I was just reiterating that the main, the main kind of effort behind that, one of the things that I had heard for years in the community alliance was the coordination piece. So before referrals weren't connected, it was really hard to have because of privacy, and there's a lot of things. So if you have CalOptima, if you have CHOC, if you have the providers working with us, then it's one phone call. The parent doesn't have to make three phone calls. And all of that is routed through one integrated system. And for this serving Title I or Tier One students, it's not Tier Three. So we're really trying to target and do preventative work and early intervention. So we don't have Tier Three needs as much, which I think we all would love to reduce.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Arsoilu? Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
All right. Let's move on to discussion action calendar, item 20. 20A is to approve the 2023-24 First Interim Report of District's Financial Status. Mr. Trader?
Good evening. This is the moment we've all been waiting for, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Don't start the clock yet. Need every second. So let's talk about the first interim. First of all, what is the first interim? So we, we talk about it, it's required by law, and it includes all of our budget revisions from adopted budget to first interim. And you might think, well, what is that time period? Well, that time period is July 1 through October 31 of 2023. And there's more. It includes all of our assumptions for a multi-year forecast update, which we need to talk about tonight on that. And then it certifies the district's ability to meet its financial obligations in the current year and two years out. And so with that, then, if you look at our reporting cycle, here we are, July, we get a state budget adoption. September, we get our 22-23 unaudited actuels. And here we are at first interim. And then we're going to go into next year, in January, the governor will present his budget, and then we'll come to you at March for second interim. And then May, we'll do a May revise, and then, of course, the June 24-25 budget. So that gives you an idea of the cycle that we're on and where we're at in that cycle. So let's talk about the budget revisions that were made. And so we went from, we increased revenue by 13.8 million, mostly on the restricted side. However, there was a good, on property taxes, we added 5.2 million. And then we had some federal funds we added, and then some other state, which included Prop 28. We booked Prop 28, the art and music grant. And we had some discretionary grants that we also included. And then, which is really routine for this type of year, time of year, we added in 2.2 million of other local stuff, which includes an increase to leases and our school-connected organization support. So we live in a very generous community. They provide a lot of support to the district, and that's what gets added in generally at this time, because that's when those funds become available. And then for expanded... And then expenditures, of course, matched the revenues. Expenditures increased 13 million, and so mostly 4 million for salaries, about 800,000 for benefits, and then 8.3 million for non-staffing, mostly services scored in that category. So let's then talk about our multi-year outlook. So now let's step back for a moment. So recently, right, we, we had a wonderful economy, right? We were, we were going and buying things, we were buying Pelotons, right? I got a Peloton for my wife, my children, my dog, and now it works out great. I can lay my clothes on it, right, when I get home. And, and now the economy's kind of, kind of slowing down just a little bit. But the news, the news isn't all that really awful. We hear that it's either going to be a soft landing, or it'll be a recession. But if we have a recession, it will be a forgettable one. But then, when you read the Wall Street Journal, and they report that California has never seen, has not seen budget projections so far off since the Great Recession. And you look at the LAO, and the LAO says, we have a $68 billion problem. And so how do you square that? Economy not so bad, but the barn is burning up in Sacramento. And so the only thing you surmise is that the barn's burning because of decisions that were made in Sacramento. And, and those decisions have caused us to over-appropriate Prop 98. And so we have a problem, the state has a problem. And you might wonder, well, how, how in the world are they going to solve this problem? And how is this going to impact us? Specifically, us at Newport Mesa. And so we know the state has a number of tools that they can use. One would be to drain the rainy day fund, right? And do it in a way that won't carry the over-appropriation of Prop 98 into its future. And, and then another way is to utilize cash deferrals. So, meaning, money that the state owes you today, they say, well, you know what, we owe you today, but we'll pay you maybe in six months, maybe in a year, maybe a year and a half. And we know in the Great Recession, the, the state borrowed $11 billion from school districts. So, given all that, you could see a scenario where the state might use a combination, right? They may drain the rainy day fund sum, and they may use cash deferrals. And so that's important to us to know, because when you look at our, our revenue stream there, you get, that's a great line until you get up to 22-23, and then it just flattens out. It stalls, right? And so you're seeing the impact of the COVID-19 funds go away, and the state having this issue that they're going to have to deal with. And that's going to impact us. And so when you match that to revenues, then that becomes, that's the problem. There, you see, the red line should never be above the green line. And, and when we do our forecasts, when we do the models that we have, we're going to have to make some changes, and that mainly is going to be sharpening our pencil on our budget to make sure we're prioritizing and picking up pennies, a lot of pennies, that are out there. But we'll have to do some, some adjusting there to make that work. And that's possible to do. It's, it's very doable to make happen. We knew this was going to happen, and here, here's the kicker, right? So when we look at ending fund balance, isn't that wonderful? The ending fund balance goes up, right? You see the impact of the, of the COVID money, right? And then, then, and then we start coming down. And, and that's still a, a really healthy balance. But we need that kind of balance because when you look at cash flow, if we don't have cash, we can't pay our bills. And when you look at, and we're a little bit different because we are a community-funded district, so we don't get paid like monthly from the state. We have a different pay schedule, and so we have to have some reserves to handle our cash drive period between July and December. And so you look at our cash flow, this is our, our cash low point, right? So normally, before the, the COVID, we'd run about $20 million in the negative for our cash low point. And then we got the COVID money, right? So we, we're, we're living pretty large right now, where we have a large, fairly large cash balance. But that's going to drop off, and we're going to return back to normal again. And if the state decides to turn, to kick in with cash deferrals, then we'll need that. So reason why we have the, the reserves that we do are to manage that. It's very, very expensive to go to the street to borrow money, and we'd like to avoid that if we can do that. And so the state's missing its revenue targets. State reserves will help. And just to summarize, you know, the state is favorable this year, not so favorable going in the out years. Expenditures are going to flatten out. We're stretching, and, but we're financially positioned, and we recommend approval of the first interim with a positive certification. Thank you.
All right, so do we have a motion? And then we can have discussion after.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Questions, trustees? Trustee Anderson?
Yes. I was wondering, it looks like the COVID-19 revenue stall slide, it's not that much of a difference, right? Which for us, specifically being community-funded by property taxes, it looks like it's like 8.7 million around. That's the, it's that the difference? Rather than like it being astronomically like a huge, huge amount? Or is, is like that the amount that we're sharpening our pencil, or do you have a different like kind of amount? That's my, just quick calculation here.
No, that, you're very, you're, you're right on the mark. It's about $8 million, 2% of the budget, and that's about the amount that we're going to be sharpening the pencil on.
Okay. So not very much for, I mean, that's one house.
Super doable.
Because you're one house.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I, on this, the 8.3 million non-staffing that had increased in this interim, what, it says services. What services do you know were part of those? And, and were they things that we, that we forecasted for, or are the needs that we just saw that are, that our students needed and we, we couldn't not offer them?
So the way that works, all of this was primarily restricted funding. So a lot of that is Prop 28 with the art and music. There was a lot that went into, we, we loaded in some ESER funds, which was already, how you say, planned, we just hadn't booked the money yet. And so you're seeing just those services come online. So we have things, I'm trying to think of some, some good points. We have Strategic Kids assist us, we have Alivo, we've got some other things that we do that help provide services to our students. Professional development, all that stuff got all added in at first interim.
Okay. So they, but we do have money for those funds.
Correct. So it's all matched with revenue.
Gotcha.
So you see all that revenue come in, and the expense came in at the same time.
Gotcha. And then, so, you know, the state's going to be at a $68 billion budget deficit. How do you expect that to really, besides deferrals and things, how, do you expect our district to have to make more adjustments with that, with that, that projection of 68 million, a billion deficit?
So when you look at how the state has behaved in the past, for example, they, they knew that they could have an issue, but they still went forward with ELOP, TK expansion, really big programs. And, and so in the past, they've been very reluctant to make cuts, because they recognize that, that cuts are much more destabilizing than, say, cash deferrals. So I'd expect there'd be some, you know, a combination of draining the rainy day fund and deferrals that would hit us, and we're well-positioned for that kind of scenario. If, if they make cuts, well, then that, that could be much more, just how you say, disturbing to, to us.
When will they give us that information of what they decide to do? Or is that just as the day comes?
Well, you'd think that by the time they, in January, when, when they issue the budget, that hopefully they'd have a good idea about how they're going to solve this problem going forward.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Trustee Anderson?
So if we possibly get reimbursed from TK, that could possibly make up some of this? What is, do you have an estimate? I can't think off the top of my head, but is it like 300? How, like, I have no, I don't remember off the top of my head how much the TK integration has been for us. It's well over 8 million.
Yeah, yeah, TK's about 15 million right now.
Okay. So if we can advocate for that, that would be helpful.
And we are.
Us as well.
Yes, that's what I meant. You guys, you guys are on it.
Trustee Murphy?
Yeah, but Jeff, we're not going to get reimbursed for TK this year.
No.
Not this year, but something to continue to ask for.
No way.
That's a good point. You know, even if, if they don't come through, right now, we have, we're part of a mandated cost case that includes TK. And so maybe a decade from now.
Maybe. No, come on, Jeff, be, be, let's look positively at it, like five years.
Five years.
So, Mr. Trader, can you explain, for me, the deferrals are the concerning part. Can you describe the formula that they use that would make us, and how much we would be liable for it? Is it a percentage of our budget? Is it, what is it? How do they figure it out?
So the state, the state looks at all the money that they pay us. And, and yes, most of our money comes from property tax, but there's a good million, you know, tens of millions of dollars that they pay us for special ed or other state kind of programs.
So restricted ones.
Right, restricted programs. And, and what they do is they, they put those on a schedule, and depending on how, how badly they, they are in a position of, they will move those out, those payment schedules out. And, and in the previously, we had some money moved out over a year and a half. So they, they pay you today, you're owed today, but they say, you know, we'll pay you in, in a year and a half. And so we could see something along those, anywhere between, you know, that and a year and a half.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Murphy?
But Jeff, say that happens again, you, I feel, since you don't look scared, that we probably have the reserves to cover a year and a half to even two-year deferment, right?
Yeah, you, as the board, you've given, you've been very good about not having us drive really close to the cliff, the financial cliff, and so there's reserves there to handle a deferral issue.
Which, I mean, we've gone back and forth on what we should do with that, but it seems like this year, that was a great decision.
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Trader. As always, very enlightening. All right, so let's call for the vote. Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee尔soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Student Board Member Victor Jimenez?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we move on to 20B, approve the 2024 CSBA Delegate Assembly nomination. Dr. Smith?
Yeah, so the Delegate Assembly is the governing body of the California School Boards Association. Each year, districts have an opportunity to nominate potential delegates. They have to be turned in by January 7. And there is a request to have trustee Carol Crane be selected as a potential delegate for Region 15, and that's the item. Trustee Barto is a delegate, so she might be able to add some flavor to that.
Yes, so there, long story, some need condensed. We have, there's additional delegate spots open, and we'll know what that looks like in January, but if there's a spot open for our region, which it looks like there will be, then we can nominate trustee Crane. And then if selected, she would go on to the delegate, the General Delegate Assembly, which is then voted on for all of Region 15, which is basically Orange, most of Orange County. So I would, I'll approve, I'll make that motion.
Moved by trustee Barto, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Called for the vote? Student Board Member Victor Jimenez?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee尔soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you. And now we move on to informal reports. Superintendent Smith?
Yeah, I don't get all the young people lingo, FOMO, a fear of missing out, something like that. I don't know what it is when you've actually missed out and you're just really bummed about it, but the last week, I've missed so many great activities in the district because I couldn't be in person from Harvard Council to myriad other things. My apologies to all the sites that invited me out, but I'm back. And so we'll, we'll be there visiting classrooms, activities with parents, et cetera. Before, though, that happened, we did have some great work that we've started with the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence that some of you have heard about. But so the community knows, we're working with the state agency, ask some expertise in special education amongst other things, and working in collaboration with those experts to self-reflect and look at how we're serving our students, many of whom have some of the most significant needs in our district. What are we doing to benefit them, their families, and how can we improve outcomes therein? So really excited to work with them. Our team's really leaned in. We had our first kind of leadership meeting, but they'll be meeting with others, with, with parents, with site leaders, et cetera. It'll be comprehensive, it'll be multi-year, and Jeff, this should make you really excited, like gold jacket excited. It's, it's free of charge. They've agreed to do this work with us because they want to demonstrate in California what is possible, so we're excited about that. Amy did mention LMI, and I too really appreciate that opportunity to come together and talk about how we, as a district, improve communications. One of the thoughts that they share with us is how do we disagree without dehumanizing? I love that, without individualizing. It's a great goal for us to have, and I'm confident that we can learn from that guided process. And Amy mentioned her, her morning routine. It was more exciting than she made it sound. In fact, as a partner, I felt so guilty, and I think I told her, after I did my pause, and then rephrased what she said, please never tell my wife what you do every morning and how your husband serves you in that, in that appropriate, awesome manner, because I don't do any of those things. But, but the important thing really was talking about how do we have difficult conversations, right? Again, how do we have difficult conversations? Disagree without dehumanize, those are lofty goals. But, you know, well-intended professionals can achieve those goals. And then we went to the California School Boards Association conference, a great conference. Mentioned the state budget update. One of the, the biggest sessions there was the Capitol Advisors Budget Update. Not just standing room only, three deep in the lobby, people trying to just hear. And everyone walked away saying, this is one of the best presentations of the entire event. I thought it was funny because it was good, but we heard it two weeks earlier, here, live, when our advocates at Capitol Advisors came and shared that same information. That's the kind of information... That's the kind of information our community is getting because of the partnerships that we have. We won a Golden Bell Award for our graduation coach program, which is awesome, not only is achievement improving, not only above the state and county averages on those dashboard metrics, graduation is improving because of the intentionality. And that was recognized. And that's not an easy thing to be recognized for a Golden Bell. It's one of the hardest recognitions, I believe, for a school district to get. And we did it. And we're going to be looking forward to more of those opportunities and celebrating the great work being done by all of our certified classified management staff out there in the field. Then I had a chance, the last day, to meet with Linda Darling-Hammon, the president of the California School Boards Association, as we had a very, very intimate meeting with a few superintendents, her and part of her staff, to talk about what we can do to be more communicative with the state board so that the actual experiences of the field are informing the governance at the state level. Right? One of the things we talked about is even things like the dashboard and how they, which is in their control, identify the metrics. For example, when we look at chronic absenteeism in an era of post-COVID, it doesn't make a lot of sense because we are keeping kids and employees safe. Right? The state said you've got to keep both safe. People had to quarantine. We have a lot of families that live in single dwellings, multiple families. So it impacted a lot of people. We could scrub that data, in fact, we have for the state. We'd had 14 of our 22 elementary schools qualify as a distinguished school. And I shared with Linda Darling-Hammon, while you may not have the ability to change that now, that's the impact you're having on the self-concept of students, their schools, and communities where they can really benefit from being celebrated for how great they are and the professionals serving them. Wes, I know, okay, I know, I know, we got to work on that. Well, they're working on the dashboard now. So there's hope that they learn from these lessons and move forward. But I thought CSBA was a very, very great opportunity, very fruitful for those of us there participating, learning, benefit for governance teams, but more importantly, our students in this district.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I think your PIO office got a little break last week because the Where's Wes was just at home. No photos. All right, so trustees, should we start from next to Victor? Trustee Pearson?
Sure. I had a busy month. I got to start off going to the Newport Coast Elementary Jog-a-thon. Carol came with me. And of course, it was the only day of the month that it rained. And rained pretty hard. I thank Principal Darrell Heather for letting the kids run and jump in the puddles. It was still a fantastic event. It was great to see the kids out there having fun. And all the parents, the PTA parents, running along with them. So it was, it was a great day. I also got to attend the CAC, the Community Advisory Committee, that our wonderful special ed team put on. It was great to see our administration, our special ed team, come together with the parents. I think our team did a great job presenting them information, listening to them, and answering their questions. And I look forward to continuing that relationship and, and growing, growing with them. I got to attend Victor's favorite, the Early College High School Submission Day, which was absolutely fantastic. I love everything about college. And this was the day that we got to watch them all submit their first application. Of course, as a mom who's gone through this process with three kids, I was going crazy, you know, who's editing on them? You know, I was, I was having a heart attack. But it was ceremonial and it was fantastic that we got to see it. It was a fantastic, fantastic event to be at. I've been, another thing I really enjoyed doing, again, with President Crane now, is we went to sit down with our police chief, Cartwright. And that was a fun afternoon to thank him for the wonderful partnership that we have with them, our incredible SROs, the, their ability to protect our kids on campuses and how safe they have made us feel here in Newport Beach and Costa Mesa this past month. So we brought them some crumbled cookies. And that was probably one of our, our favorite, my favorite events. So it was a good, it was a good month.
Trustee Murphy? Sure, not a whole lot. Costa Mesa Middle School had a great production of Frozen, so congratulations. It was very well attended. It was nice to see so many families out and coming to see Frozen. I was bummed to miss the CAC meeting because we were flying out to DC for the National Blue Ribbon Awards for Early College High School, which was really amazing. Trustee Anderson and I got to accept that award. Dr. Martinez clearly deserves it, so that was exciting. And then obviously, CSBA was great. Yes, there was standing room only in the budget session. But luckily, I felt like, Jeff, we were, based on everything you've shared with us, that I didn't need to be quite as nervous as I felt like a few other people in the room were. So thank you for all of your leadership. And good judge, good solid judgment on our numbers. And we also got to attend the Harbor PTA Luncheon. It was great to sit with College Parks, Nora, Pollerino Principals and PTA Presidents. And they're all doing great work. And Jeff, again, the Gold Lemay Jacket was, you know, the hit of the luncheon. And so thanks to Harbor Council PTA because it was a really fun event. I don't think anyone knew how many words you could create with toothpicks, but you can, and that was very exciting. So good job, everyone.
Okay, I also attended CSBA and the Harbor Council PTA Luncheon, both which were very fun. I got to meet the principal of Newport Coast, who I'd never met before. She was at my table, so that was nice. One thing I enjoyed about CSBA this time was the, one of our breakout sessions. I think I walked into the wrong one. I found out later. But it worked out great because we ended up having a really good conversation about what different districts were doing for mental health and best practices. And a really productive session where we were able to kind of learn from other districts and things on, things like cell phone policies. One of the districts has therapy dogs at their high schools during finals and midterms and AP classes, which I thought was a really interesting, innovative, out-of-the-box and low-cost idea for helping students with their mental health. So it was good. I feel like sometimes you go in those sessions, you don't get a lot out of it. We had a really, got some really great ideas. And then going way, way back, I went to the Newport Harbor Theater production in their Black Box Theater of Trap. It was great. Really small, little audience and a lot of audience participation that was unexpected. The kids did a really phenomenal job. And it's really exciting to see kind of that theater program spread its wings again.
Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. Well, I was really excited to hear about the 72 students that signed up to vote in our upcoming election. Thank you to Resilience OC. And hopefully, they can work across our district. I think that's an exciting thing for our students, particularly those who are trying to get their seal of civic engagement. I also attended CSBA. One of the sessions that I attended was with several of the others here was on workforce housing and development, which was really interesting and also something that I think there's a lot of research on. And it was, it was just interest, the people that were there had a very wide range of expertise. And so I think a lot of us took notes. And I was excited also to see Sean Genright, who is someone that I have read a lot of his work about healing-centered, a healing-centered approach rather than a deficit or a trauma-informed approach. Instead of what is the worst thing that's happened to you? What is the worst day you've had? Instead, thinking what could you do? What could your future look like? And helping guide students through that. And I was also able to go to DC. It was really, it was wonderful. We knew Dr. Martinez was focused on being there for the college day. So we wanted to support him and accept the award. There's only 230 schools in the country that got a Blue Ribbon Award. I was also able to go to Wilson Elementary on Friday night for their Christmas holiday event. And they had a Grinchmas theme. And one of our community facilitators, who's like 6'3", was the best Grinch ever. It was so amazing, like he really looked just like him. And he was there for three hours taking pictures. And he has a lot of energy. So it was lovely to, it was lovely to see him there. And then upcoming, we have the Soy Holiday Party and then also the West Side Nights Christmas Celebration. So just a lot of really lovely community events coming up. And I also just wanted to say thank you for the card and for the present. It has been an honor for me to serve this last year as president. It was something I didn't know that I would ever get to do. And I just think being able to bring our board, I think, together in ways that were unexpected was really valuable and helpful. And I'm just really looking forward to the upcoming year. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
Thank you. I also went to CSBA. And CSBA, I attended a session that was all about using ChatGPT in, in classes. And it was primarily about using it in English classes. And it was done by the, I think it's the Santa Cruz Union School District, Unified School District. And, you know, they've got some expertise up there using that. And they were just saying how, you know, technology is always scary in the beginning when something gets first, you know, brought to the forefront. And they're saying how, you know, we can actually use this as a benefit. You just have to first know your student's voice by getting them to do writing in class or something that is authentic before you start assigning, you know, work that might be done outside of the classroom or even in the classroom. So understanding that student voice, and that's just like anything. When you, you really want to get down to the bottom of who everyone is in your, as a student, and then see how you can utilize the tools effectively to make them an even better student. So, you know, it was really, really useful. And they also gave us different apps that are really useful for English writing that utilize some of those ChatGPT benefits. So, you know, it was one of those things where I think we've all kind of played around with it and thinking, how is this going to change the world of our students? But I think it can be used as a benefit as opposed to just being a hindrance. So that was really awesome. And then, you know, there's a lot of wonderful Christmas performances with the elementaries next year. I just want to thank the music teachers for providing the recorders right before Christmas break. Those, I'm glad those went home just last week and are going to be home all, all, all Christmas break. So those, yeah, so they have performances next week on those. Yeah. And, and, but it's a great time of year. I think, you know, to see that everyone enjoy Christmas. I know in high school, and there's just a lot of finals. So I wish everyone good luck and, and less anxiety, hopefully, over the Christmas season. And, and happy holidays and happy new year to everyone here. And this is superintendent, superintendents, board. Wish you all the best. Yeah, see ya in '24.
Thank you. First, congratulations on your new appointment, Amy. And Harbor Council PTA, thank you for the most entertaining luncheon I've ever attended. That was amazing. It truly was so engaging. Everyone was, we were all interacting and playing and like being kids. It was great. It was really nice. Thank you. Sorry you missed it, Wes. So CSBA was, was very inspiring. Not only do we network, but we also get to be a little bit of ourselves and interact as just humans, but then attend sessions and learn as professionals. To tag, tag along to Trustee Wigan's comments on ChatGPT. I attended keynote speaker Khan. He's the founder of Khan Academy. And he basically said, AI is coming. So you need to embrace it and you need to make it your friend in the classroom. But of course, have guardrails. And so this is very wise for us as, you know, innovative thinkers and looking into the future, that we can't deny that it's coming. It's just, we need to know how to embrace it and turn it into a positive. And so I think that this is very exciting for us. And I know that EdTech Department's already doing some professional developments around that. So I think we're kind of a little bit ahead compared to a lot of districts around the state. Very social time of year. Went to Sanchez's production of Flowers for Algernon. Our own Jose Gomez was one of the casts, one of members of the cast. So that was wonderful. And I saw Dr. Smith and Mrs. Smith at the event. So thank you for supporting the arts, Dr. Smith. And we went to many events, including the vocal performance at CDM, a holiday performance. There was like 150 kids participating. It was wonderful, very cheerful, great time of year for that. Looking forward to going to all the elementary school performances in our zone with the Trustee Pearson. That's always a very fun time of year because it just puts joy in your heart. And hey, why not? Right? We all could use that. A thank you and to everyone for a wonderful year. I'm excited to lead our board. It's, it's, it would be an honor to do so. And I look forward to it. And I look forward to the challenge, but also to the connections of moving ahead. And lastly, happy new year, happy holidays. Thank you all for everything you do. I hope you enjoy your time off because it's well-deserved. All right, so, oh yes, the meeting is adjourned, 8:34.